Welcome everyone, this is Adam Frick with Folsom TV. Thanks for tuning in again. We have another candidate that we're going to be interviewing. I'm with Mike Kozlowski right now. And this is Coffee in Conversation with a candidate for City Council. So Mike, I'm going to introduce him a little bit here. He's got some great things that I think you all should know. Mike moved to Folsom in 2005. You have three kids, one wife.
One wife, yep.
You've got a Masters in Architecture.
I do.
You're also the head coach for Track and Field at Vista High School.
That's correct.
You're also an announcer, so he is the voice of the basketball team for Vista as well, right?
That's right, yeah.
And you currently serve on the Utility Commission.
That's correct also.
In Folsom. Is there anything I missed that you'd like our viewers to see?
I was, at one point, the five-time consecutive Masters age group high jump championship, champion for Northern California.
Oh, really?
Which basically means that from age 40 to 45, I high jumped better than all other men that age in Northern California, and about as good as a high school girl. So...
Well, that's one heck of a claim to fail.
Yeah, you only have to beat the people that show up. That's the best thing about Track and Field.
Right, right. So tell us about your experience here in Folsom. Now, you moved in 2005. Did you get involved right away? Or what was your, what was your goal when you moved here? And why did you move to Folsom? Why did you choose Folsom?
Great question, yeah. So my, my wife has two sisters, and each of them randomly ended up meeting and marrying guys from California, even though my wife's whole family is from Michigan. And each of them ended up moving here to Folsom at different times. And we had been coming to visit them for probably close to 10 years, every other summer, visiting Folsom to visit relatives. And I sort of reached a spot in my career at the time where I was looking for something interesting to do, and we had the opportunity to make a, make a location change. And I figured, never going to be a better time than right now. Folsom's awesome, let's, let's move to California. So found a job here in California and brought the family out.
Very nice. Now, did you, did you have your kids here? Or did you already have kids and you brought the whole family?
Oh, no, no, no. Our, our kids are a little bit older, so when we moved here, the kids were in sixth and eighth grade and started, started kindergarten that, that next, that, right after we got here.
Okay.
So the daughter who was starting kindergarten is now a senior in high school at Vista del Lago. And the boys have managed to graduate from Vista each, and then from San Diego State and Cal Poly.
Oh, very nice. What are their, are they following in dad's footsteps in architecture? Or are they going somewhere else?
My older son, sort of. He's, he got an engineering degree from Cal Poly and is working for Boeing up in Seattle as a, sort of a time and motion specialist. He helps reduce their process time on manufacturing processes. The younger one is just finished at San Diego State and is about to hopefully go into their doctoral program for physical therapy there at, at San Diego State. So nothing related to architecture, but they're both really happy.
Human, human architecture.
Exactly, yeah. Structural...
Anatomical architecture.
Exactly, exactly. And then my daughter is a fantastic musician who we think may go to college for that, but we're not 100% sure. Working on it.
Very nice.
Yeah, working on a plan.
All right, cool. So, so you moved here in 2005, your kids started school. When did you get involved in, with Track and Field?
Right, so, so like I said, when we first moved here, the, the boys, my older son was in eighth grade, and the next year, actually 2007, the fall of 2000, fall of 2007, Vista del Lago opened, and he was one of the very first freshmen at Vista del Lago. And the principal at the time put out an email to all the parents saying, hey, we need coaches or assistant coaches for all of our sports. The only thing we've picked so far is a head football coach. Anybody who's interested, why don't you send me an email? I volunteered because I knew something about Track and Field, because I had done that in high school myself. And they picked somebody to be the head coach, and that guy and I met, and I taught kids how to high jump for a couple of years, and then he moved on to some other things, and I took over the program. And we've had tremendous success since then.
Very nice.
Yeah, it's been, it's been fun. The, you know, I get, I get to take, I get given a lot of credit for our success up there with the track team, but the reality is, is every year I have 150 athletes, 300 parents, and 10 assistant coaches that make me look like a genius. But, so I kind of have carved out the general manager job and make sure that the buses get there on time, everybody's got a uniform, pictures get taken.
Yep.
And we strategically prepare for track meets. But that has given us five section championships in the last four years, so I'm very proud about that. And we could talk for the next two hours about track if you wanted, but there's other, some other things people probably are interested in from a city council candidate.
Yeah, well, I love the fact that you're passionate about, about that.
I really, I really love it, yeah.
And donating your time. Obviously, I don't think there's, there's a paycheck in it for you.
I get, I get a small stipend, but I, it works out to about the minimum wage I got when I started working back in 1986, so...
Right, right. That's great. So now Utility Commission.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you're, you're one of the only ones that have actually gotten selected. So you weren't appointed by someone, which is actually harder to get on any of the committees or the commissions by just applying to be on the commission.
Right, yeah. So, so I put an application in a couple of years ago to just serve on a committee or commission for, for the city, and left it open to, you know, the selection process. And they, you know, each of the council members gets to pick somebody for each one of the boards, and then there's usually two at-large seats, and they literally draw poker chips out of a jar, and mine came up for Utility Commission. And I couldn't be more pleased, honestly. It's been really educational, because I've got to understand in great detail the entire, you know, water system that we have here in Folsom. Supply, distribution, and all the, you know, details of things that have been talked about a great deal recently.
Right, right. How long you been serving on the Utility Commission?
Coming up on two years. So it was right after the 2016 election that I got appointed to that, so in that December.
Okay.
So coming up just about two years right now.
Okay, so now, big question.
Yeah.
What made you decide to run for City Council?
Oh, well, I, you know, I tell people all the time, you know, that moving to Folsom, aside from, you know, mustering up the courage to ask my wife to marry me, is the best decision I ever made. And my family has, you know, benefited tremendously from that move. We've thrived beyond any expectation that I had.
Yeah.
And part of that is that I've benefited financially in finding a great job here in California, had the support of the community for a lot of the things that I'm interested in. And I now find myself with, you know, interest in serving, right? A feeling of responsibility to provide some service to the community because of all the good things it's done for me. And luckily, I have the, you know, sort of time to be able to devote to it. And it's a time-consuming assignment. Don't, don't ever be, anybody not think that that's the case, because, you know, there was, there was a big hubbub at the city council meetings about, you know, the size of the general plan document that was under discussion the last couple of months.
Right.
And it was, you know, 500-some pages. So it's, it's a lot of information to be able to digest and make good, solid, reasoned decisions about. And I feel well-suited to do that, and I have the time to devote to it.
Well, good. That's, that's, obviously, it's very key, and now you understand that this is a pretty thankless job.
Yeah.
For the most part. I mean, there's, there's a lot of support that you're going to have from, from the community, but you're, you're also going to be making hard decisions that are going to benefit some and not benefit others. And are you prepared for, are you prepared for that?
Oh, sure. I mean, I, I've spent most of my career being a project manager of one kind or another, and that means that you have to constantly be building consensus amongst differing groups of interests, right? As an architect, it was trying to balance, you know, what a contractor was willing to do against what your owner really wanted to do. What your plans say versus what's actually available. As a, you know, track coach, it's trying to cajole everybody into doing the right thing at the right time, and putting the time into training and things like that. And that comes with pluses and minuses. You know, in that coach role or that project manager role, you have to win everybody's support, but not everything you ask them to do is pleasant, and not everything that you do is, gives you immediate results. So you'll have detractors no matter what, and I kind of roll with the punches, so I take the good with the bad.
Well, good, because, yeah, there's, there's a lot of good. I mean, I, I've talked with our current city councilmen, and they love what they do, but there are, there are some challenges sometimes of going out to eat and, you know, having people ask you questions about policies and, and measures and things like that.
Yeah, yeah. Prepared to talk about that stuff at the drop of a hat.
All right, good stuff. So before we get to some of the, some of the real issue questions that, that you want to talk about for, for the city, I'm going to put it out there to anybody that's watching. If you'd like to ask a question to Mike Kozlowski, you can do so in the comments below. And if we don't get to your questions while we're doing the broadcast, Mike will come back and he'll answer your questions later on down the road, so that, so that you can get a better understanding of where he stands and what he, what he's, what your positions are for Folsom and how you're going to treat each issue.
Perfect, happy to, happy to do that.
All right. So a couple of things that you wanted to talk about is police and fire. Now, obviously, we're building a brand-new fire station on, what's, Empire Ranch?
Empire Ranch Road.
Empire Ranch Road, yes, thank you.
Grand opening next Monday.
Yes.
10 a.m.
We will be there, Folsom TV will be there.
Great, great, great.
So talk to me a little bit about police and fire and our growth.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so a couple of things. You know, we, we're opening that fire station probably a good, solid five, six, maybe eight years after it would have been useful.
Yeah.
And, and that's, you know, there's lots of reasons for that. The downturn in the economy, you know, forced us to put some plans on hold here in the city. And, you know, nobody did anything wrong in that delay. However, the area south of 50, as it develops, we need to make sure that we build up the staffing of the police and fire departments and their resources, like buildings where they're necessary, at, at the same pace that that development is going. We can't be behind on that, because the small response time degradation that happened because we didn't have that fire station in Empire Ranch will be much more drastic if fire apparatus has to drive from the north part of Folsom all the way across the freeway to the south part of Folsom.
Right.
And it'll not only put them out of reach of the north part of Folsom for the periods when they're down there, but it'll just take time to get down there. So we need to make sure that we, you know, develop that piece of infrastructure that's essential to public safety at the right pace. And, you know, public safety, when you get right down to it, is the elemental reason why we all love Folsom. It's a nice, safe place to raise your family and find a job, right? So we gotta, we gotta, that, that, you know, it's the largest budget line in the city budget, police and fire.
Yeah.
And with good reason, it's the, it should be the principal concern of the city council. So that's, that's, that's my number one, that's my number one reason for doing this, is to keep an eye on that. And as a result, you know, not only have I got the support of a lot of, lot of groups, but the firefighters, the Folsom firefighters and the Folsom Police Officers Association have endorsed my candidacy.
All right. That's a big one.
It is, it is. It's important. Those guys and gals do a great job for us, and they need, they need to know that we all understand that they can't always do more with less. Sometimes they just need to do more with more.
Right, exactly. Yeah, and investing in that, obviously, is, is...
Pays back to all of us in our property values.
Correct.
100%.
Correct. So this kind of goes in the same line, and this is a big, hot topic that people are talking about right now, is traffic.
Oh, sure, yeah. So, so there's a great deal of, you know, well-placed concern that as the city continues to grow and we add residents, that traffic is going to get worse. I think we have some traffic congestion right now that is pretty frustrating.
Yeah.
In some, in some particular locations, and it's no secret to everybody that the most congested spot is Iron Point and East Bidwell, right at the freeway entrance and by the corner of the Palladio.
Yeah.
That, that intersection and five other corridors through the city and intersections are, are ones that I think that we can make some improvements to right away, some of which has been planned by the city to happen. As a council member, I'll just want to make sure that we follow through on those plans, and then continue to find ways to improve the flow of traffic through those choke points that we have currently. So my second key reason for running for City Council is to make sure that we work on congestion issues now.
Got it. Now, is that the one that's rated F right now? Is the, the intersection?
I think, I think it has periods of the day when it reaches the, you know, the, the F rating of traffic timing, but I think that whether it's D or E or F, it is definitely an F for frustrating.
Yeah.
At certain times of the day. And, you know, not that it's the magic bullet, but we all could, you know, spend a little ti, we can actually spend a little time driving through Folsom and get on the freeway at the other entrances, and that will relieve a little bit of that. But, you know, Folsom is uniquely situated where we have three bridges over the American River and a passage around the lake, right? So we get used as a pass-through location for lots of people that live or work in Eldorado Hills or up the hill in other places, down in Rancho or Sacramento, and maybe live in Eldorado Hills or live in Granite Bay or live somewhere north of the lake. So we get an enormous amount of traffic that just passes through, so I'm not sure what, I'm not sure how we slow them down except for maybe special tolls, but I'm not going to suggest that.
So the, the south of 50, obviously, is a big concern. People are worried that the new houses are going to create more traffic, and it just seems logical, more people, more traffic.
Yeah.
Is there, is there something that we can do to minimize the impact of the south of 50?
Yeah, so what, I think what's, what's not entirely understood by everyone, but many people do get this, is that the, the planning for the area south of 50, the plan area, it actually has a really robust road network, mostly complete right now of its arterial roads, okay? And there's a, there's a road immediately south of the freeway that will mirror Iron Point. So you can pass without going onto Highway 50 through that entire plan area, either on that new road or on White Rock or Grant Line.
Sure.
So, so you've got chances to go east-west to any of the freeway entrances within that development area. And those roads are all sized for the number of residents that there's going to be. So it's not a case where we built two-lane roads, and then when there's a bunch of houses, we're going to expand them. We're building them at full size.
Got it.
And that was the commitment of the developers, and they have been following through on that. So, so I think the traffic within that area is going to be handled well by the road structure that's getting installed. Clearly, the amount of trips on and off the freeway will increase at the three freeway exchanges, which is all the more reason why we need to work as diligently as we can to get the two more exchanges that are planned up at Empire Ranch Road and at Oak Avenue to come to fruition sooner rather than later.
Right.
So we need, we need those, and we need them, like I said, as soon as we can get them.
And do we know when they're slated for?
I don't think that there's a hard date on either one of them. Both are waiting for pieces of funding to come through.
Right.
So highway exchanges like that end up being funded partly by developer fees, partly by the city, partly by Caltrans, and sometimes partly by the federal government. So getting all of that to hit the ground all at the same time is the bigger challenge than actually building it.
Right.
So we, we are, the city, we need to do our part so that nobody else has an excuse.
Right.
Yeah.
Very good. So you brought up another, another interesting one that, I haven't heard from any other candidates, but it makes, it makes a lot of sense for the city of Folsom in how active and, and how many events are happening here in town, and that's the Dan Russell Arena.
Yeah, our, our very, our terrific Dan Russell Arena has been hosting the rodeo back there in Rodeo Park for a long time. And I think we should, you know, one of the things about the plan area in south of 50 that's actually, the opportunity that people overlook is that we're going to have 1,000 acres of open space down there. More trails, more bike paths, all of that kind of stuff. And I think we can look at that development as an opportunity to now have, you know, 20,000 or 30,000 more people chip in for some public amenities that serve all of us. And I think planning for a bigger, better rodeo arena that can do multi-use functions would be fantastic. All that open space, I mean, a new arena, if it were in that south area, would be closer to the freeway, could have better parking, could be a better security situation for the police department, could host concerts potentially. The rodeo, obviously, there's a bunch of local people that have, that run high-level sporting events, like the California International Marathon. That could be a starting point for an NCAA cross-country championship. Could be any number of things. Hopefully, we can have, get the Sacramento Republic to come play there or something like that.
Right.
But start with baby steps. I think that there's, there's a lot of planning that would go into something like that, but I, the rodeo itself is the number-one event that the Chamber of Commerce sponsors, and it's the number-one draw from the region into Folsom for visitors. And there's, it's a good investment just to make the rodeo better.
Yeah.
Bigger and better.
It's, I think it's one of the biggest events in all of Sacramento, if I'm not...
That doesn't surprise me at all, yeah.
Yeah, and I've been part of the rodeo for a long time, so obviously, that's very near and dear to my heart. I love, I love our little rodeo. And I gotta, I got a little quick story, but when I first got introduced to the rodeo and thought, you know, everyone said, oh, you gotta, you gotta volunteer for the rodeo. It's going to be a lot of fun, you're going to really enjoy it and whatnot. And I'm like, ah, it's rodeo. I'm not going to do that. And I think it was the following year I got involved, and it was after that I said, I'm going to come back to this rodeo every single year, and I'm going to do, I'm going to volunteer my time, because I think this is just such a fantastic, family-friendly event here in Folsom.
Yeah.
That, we're just, I think we're just so fortunate to have that event here in town, and with its long running, it's like 57 years running now, it's, it's amazing.
Yeah, you only have to see mutton busting one time to love the rodeo forever.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, so south of 50, you know, building that out, obviously, Dan Russell Arena, that would be a really cool thing, but a big concern that, that keeps coming up, other than traffic for south of 50, is water.
Of course.
So, so what can you tell us about?
Yeah, so, so one of the really fortunate things about being appointed to the Utility Commission is I got to ask a lot of pointed questions to our Utilities Director, and, you know, he's made a number of presentations to our, our board that you can go back and look at on, on the city website, about, you know, what the sources of water are for Folsom and how it is that we identified a water source for south of 50. And the, the short story is that Folsom, because it was, you know, the ancestor of a original Spanish land grant here, has some of the most senior rights to the American River for water that exists, period. So the, the amount of water that we can take from the, from the American River is one thing, but the fact that nobody else can supersede our right to take water from the American River is, is really important to understand.
Right.
And, and the, the basic trade-off that happened with south of 50 is that we have, we had more than the water that we needed for north of 50, right? But we also had a aging water distribution system in the city, and the cost to make some significant repairs to the existing water system north of 50, so it would be less leaky, resulted in us saving enough water every year that was no longer just flowing into the ground to supply the houses south of 50. And the cost of doing that was actually less than what the developers would have probably had to pay to secure water rights from elsewhere and pipe it all the way from the Sacramento River, which was an early plan for down there. So I'd like to say everybody won in this case, where city got some repairs, we got to save some water. The water that was necessary for south of 50 was in our stock already, and we get to use it that way.
Got it. Speaking of water, I should say, the noises that you hear in the background, we are fortunate enough to be sitting here at Lucille's Coffee, Hops, and Vine. They were gracious enough to let us use their space, and, and as a result, they're using some of the Folsoms' water to make some wonderful coffee.
Yes.
The only place in town that has Verve coffee, so come get yourself a, a great cup of coffee here at Lucille's.
It's, yeah, it's a terrific local business that is owned by a Folsom resident, and it's, for all of you that have been here in Folsom for a while, it's in the parking lot by the new railies.
Right, it used to be a Starbucks, and now it is, it's even better. It's upgraded to Lucille's.
Yeah.
So they've, again, graciously hosted us here, and since we're talking about small business, you know, what are your thoughts on, on business here in Folsom?
Well, I mean, Folsom's a great place to start a business, because we have, you know, we have a relatively affluent population, so there's plenty of customers to go around. And my wife is still convinced that there are not enough restaurants, because every time we go out to eat, we end up waiting for, you know, at least 20 or 30 minutes. So there could be a few more tables at restaurants. But it, it's a good place, because you've got a, you've got an educated workforce here in the city. You've got a wide variety of talented people. I mean, you know, you've had a couple of different careers. I've had a couple of different careers. Most of us have these days. And there's a lot of transportable skills that are sitting here in Lucille's and all around the city that can be tapped into. So I would highly recommend businesses relocate or expand here in Folsom.
Yeah, I really would too. I mean, I, like I said, I think there's a, there's a huge pool of talent in this area, because people, those that, because I'm a transplant from the Bay Area as well, originally from Minnesota, but transplanted from the Bay Area, and I did that because the Bay Area is not a place to raise kids.
Sure.
I mean, they're a fantastic place to build your career, lots of great companies down there, but when you want to start a family, you want to go somewhere where there's stuff for the kids to do, and it's kid-friendly and it's kid-focused. And that's where I think Folsom did a fantastic job, is, is it is so kid-friendly and kid-focused with all of our parks, our trails, our, you know, our, Parks and Recreation Department is just phenomenal. And I think Ernie Sheldon deserves a lot of credit for his work in Folsom and getting as many parks as he, he was able to get.
No question, no question. Yeah, Ernie is the, I hesitate to say godfather, grandfather of our park system. And he's, yeah, he, him and lots of people had a hand in building all the parks that we have, and it's, it doesn't go unnoticed to anybody that visits Folsom that, you know, if you're, if you're looking for a family lifestyle.
Yeah.
A lifestyle where you have lots of outdoor activities that are handy, the lake, the trails, biking, this is easily the best place anywhere within Northern California to plant your, plant your flag.
Yep.
Yeah, great schools, we got everything going for us.
Yeah, schools, that's, that was one of the biggest reasons coming here. They were ranked the highest, and still are.
Oh, yeah.
We just, we're very fortunate, I think that, I say fortunate, but it's really, it really comes down to great management.
Oh, yeah.
Our, our city's been, been very well-managed. The leadership here has done a great job, and the schools, the school district that, that we're in is, is phenomenal, and everyone at the school district level, which there's going to be a school, a district forum for the candidates.
For the candidates, yes.
For, for the school district, coming up pretty soon, on the 24th of September.
Yeah, I tell people all the time that our, the motto that we've chosen for the city is distinctive by nature.
Yeah.
And the reality is that we are distinctive because of long-term, hard work and planning by lots of people.
Yeah.
So it's, it's by design that we have all the things that we have and the nice lifestyle that we enjoy.
Right. So now I'm going to go to the flip side of, of how great life is here in Folsom, and talk a little bit about another topic that's come up quite a bit, is homelessness.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, very difficult topic, you know, not, not all of it is mental health. In fact, we have one of the highest homelessness rates in California in general. So I think the last count that we heard was 60, about 60 residents here in Folsom.
Here in Folsom.
Yeah. Anything that you would like to add to that or...
Well, I mean, so like you said, I mean, there's not a magic bullet to solve that problem, but there are things that we need to continue to do. I mean, homelessness, you know, is, is part of the, the human condition if you take a look at society overall, right? So there's always going to be some element where there are people that have fallen through the cracks. the cracks. For those people that find themselves homeless just because of a family breakdown or housing loss or something like that, that's, that's a transition problem, we need to make sure that we have, you know, a, a safety net for people like that, so that after that first night they spend in their car, there's somebody they can go to to, you know, find a, find a, find someplace to sleep the next night, right? So, that, so that's a key thing, and that's something that, you know, there's, that's, that's outreach that our, you know, all of our faith communities are doing here in Folsom. That's outreach that we, as individuals, need to make sure that we're doing for people that we know, right? So, that's a personal responsibility that we can all take on, 'cause it's, you know, that, that's that part. For, for those that are, that do have addiction problems or mental health issues, the Folsom PD has partnered with the county automobile crisis team that goes around and tries to locate people who have found themselves homeless for other reasons, and for those that are willing to accept some help, tries to get them what they need.
Yeah.
So, we're doing that consistently. It's, you know, I think the budget right now is for, you know, one, one day a week for the county crisis team member to be with the Folsom PD. Perhaps we could, you know, add to that a little bit, so we'll have to take a look at some budget things on that. And then, for the, for the, there's, unfortunately, there's always gonna be some people who, they've chosen a lifestyle.
Right.
And we need to encourage them to camp out someplace aside from Folsom. So, not to be cold, but if, if, if it's somebody who's not just experiencing some kinda transition problem or is not willing to take help, then, yeah, find someplace else.
Find another location for, for that, 'cause there's, there's plenty of places up the hill that, where there's, there's...
I'm not suggesting anywhere or giving anybody a bus ticket. I'm just saying, let's encourage them to move along, that's all.
Right, right. So, why don't you, if, if you'd like, if there's anything that I missed, or if there's anything that you'd like anyone watching at home to, to know about you, your candidacy, you know, any other plans that you have if you're elected to city council that you would like anybody to know, you know, now would be a great time to...
So, so, the, I think the, the thing that's most important to me, right, is that the people on the city council need to be engaged in a way that remains open to discussion.
Yeah.
And remains transparent, and that they make decisions based on, you know, some set of values that doesn't waver from day to day or based on who may or may not support them in an election, okay? And I think that I can do that. I, I think I'm well-prepared for that. The, the, the ability to, to listen and remain patient and really, you know, take in people's comments is one of the most important things that you can have in a city council person. And I, I have served on the, you know, as, as a head coach for years. I've, you know, worked in business where I've always had the responsibility to be a consensus builder. I've, you know, been parts of boards of directors for nonprofit organizations that are national and statewide and just local, like the Talon Booster Clubs at Vista Sports Booster Club. And in each of those instances, being combative, being, you know, too stuck in any particular paradigm, not being pragmatic would have definitely not gotten me an invitation to do those things. So, I've demonstrated over and over again that I have the right disposition to, to provide, provide service in this way, and I think I'm well-suited to it. You know, and, and lots of business groups have supported me. As I've said, the police and fire have supported me. I'm really happy to have this, the endorsement of the Folsom Chamber of Commerce and the Sacramento Regional Metro PAC. That's the Regional Chamber of Commerce, Region Business, which is a whole coalition of businesses across, across all of Sacramento County and the six-county region, as well as, you know, average people in town, lots of friends that I have. Happy to have the endorsement of former Sheriff McGinnis and Councilman Andy Morin. And I wanted to save my comment about Andy Morin for last, because he's one of the retiring, you know, council people.
Right.
And I think Andy and his service is the model for my service. He has remained open, he's remained positive, he's remained a good listener, he's measured in his comments, he's, you know, got a good head on his shoulders, and has proved to be one of the best city council people we've ever had. And we're losing somebody really important to the city and everything that we enjoy now, and I want to, as best I can, model my service on his.
So, well, he's a great model to definitely model your, your service after, so I, and I talked to him after the, the forum that we had.
Oh, yeah.
A little bit, and I, I asked him a key question, which was, you know, will you remain, obviously, in Folsom, but, but will you, you help out where, where needed, or if somebody reaches out to you? Like, if some of the, the new city councilmen reach out to you, will you be available to help and, and guide and do that? Because you've got so many years of experience, and, again, one of the, one of the best relationship builders, I think, on the city council is Andy Morin.
I agree, I agree. Yeah, he and I were texting back and forth yesterday about something in particular that I was curious about, so I'm, I'm really honored to have his support, and hopefully, I can get close to his level of service, if elected.
Fantastic. Well, and to finish up my story, he said yes. So, Andy said, "You know what? I'm, I'm more than happy to help out." He's just that kinda guy. He says, you know, "I'll, I'll make myself available. If people call me," he goes, "I'll take the call, and I'll, I'll do whatever I can to still help the city of Folsom," but he goes, "My tenure, my time on, on city council is, is done."
It's been a great run for him, yeah, for all of us.
Mike, thank you so much.
Thank you, Adam. My pleasure.
For coming out and, and talking to us, and hopefully, you got some more information. You know, we wanted to give a well-rounded understanding of each candidate, and giving you the, the opportunity to learn more about each candidate, so that come November, you can make an informed decision when you go to the voting polls and, and strike your vote for three seats that are currently open for city council. And congratulations on all your, I'm gonna shake your hand again, because, you know what?
All right, great, thank you.
This is actually my first time meeting you.
Ah, okay, great.
Well, we've met in other, in other forms.
In passing, yeah.
But I've never actually had a chance to sit down and talk with you, and I, and I do really appreciate all of your answers and...
Thank you. Spend the life of it.
Yeah.
So, if I can get one last word in.
Yeah.
My phone number is no secret. It's easily found on the Vista website, as well as my campaign website, which is just mikeforfolsom.com. So, and it's a number four, not the word four.
Okay, that's your website?
That's the website, website.
Oh.
Phone number's on the website, and it's available in lots of other places. Feel free to call me.
All right. There you go. The actual website is on the, on this broadcast as well. I'll post it in the description above. And again, if you have any questions, feel free to post them down below. Mike will answer your questions. And once again, we do thank you for tuning in. We do thank you for taking your part in making our city an even better place by informing yourself of who the city council candidates are and, and then voting in November. Thanks again for tuning into Folsom TV, everybody. I hope you have a great week, and we'll see you very soon. Tomorrow, we're gonna be interviewing Rob Ross, so we will see you then.